With this for eighteen months, trying to come up with the final result on it. Excuse me, and I think basically what we're saying is that the intentions that had been referred to in previous town meetings, specifically the business of the ten percent reinvestment, we wanted to put into formal wording and also the process for expenditures dealing with the overlap of the calendar school year and calendar year as well as the whole business of the fact that we really don't appropriate the money until town meeting. So the following the same standard which we have done, which the other agencies in the town follow, limiting them to twenty-five percent of the previous year's budget being expended before town meeting approves the new budget. And other than that, the other thing that I will share with you is that in reading over D.C. Stevens' wills, the pertinent parts I have right here, we've called the fund all kinds of different things. And we really, the will specifically states that the fund which we call the enrichment fund should be called the Don C. Stevens Fund for the Public Schools of Belgrade. That's what his will stipulates. And so start referring to it that way rather than talking about an enrichment and whatever and whatever. I think that the conversations which we had with Bar Harbor indicated that the reporting out of income from the fund will be easy to get a hold of. And I think that the committee Pam has been working with would have a pretty good idea December, in the early part of December, what the funds' income was going to be for that year. Not an exact dollar, but you're going to have a pretty good projection based on that process.
Good.
I don't know if there are any other questions or any other comments that the committee wants to make, Jack?
No, I totally support what Howard said, but also there are also two related issues that don't need to be dealt with necessarily tonight. But one is, I like to think that what's done here is a model for the way the cemetery trust funds are also handled, and that's the other big one. My second point is that we have talked at some length about a unified trust fund with sub-accountings, recognizing in detail what each one of the individual trusts is, but one investment vehicle that accumulates these trust funds so that you get the benefit of the size of the fund and the benefit of the income production from a larger fund that will apply proportionately to the other funds. The small Don Stevens Fund for, we call it scholarships, but we want to call it something else, and the two or three other small ones, cemetery funds.
I was under the impression that's the way we're doing it.
That, I thought Bar Harbor indicated that that was a deal.
If that's formalized, that's fine. That's great.
That's what I'm looking for. And as Jack indicated, this is kind of a preliminary of the way we see Gupta's cemeteries and some of the other trusts, as we were looking at those, we just got the audit reports, and so then we would anticipate that we'll be meeting and getting you a recommendation for those others also.
Is it intended that this go before the town for adoption? We don't have the authority to adopt it, do we?
No, we don't. Well, we're asking the town.
I would assume that it would have to be an item on town meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The town is listed as the trustee, yeah, in the will.
We just have to come up with a proper way to word it, because it has to be worded a specific way, be put before the voters.
But I still find a little bit confusing. I mean, I understand, especially if right in front of me is designated and undesignated funds, I don't know if we have the ability to change the wording and make it a little clearer what they are, or maybe just even something in parentheses following.
This isn't going to...
That's from the auditor.
No, I don't think that, that doesn't have to go to a town meeting vote, because the fund is set up and established with that original principal amount that cannot be touched, and that's the way it's being managed, is a management decision of how you manage the fund. So you have the authorities, the select board, to make those, to, this is a policy, you adopt this policy. It's not an ordinance.
I guess the only reason we would go before the voter is only if we feel that there would be some concern somewhere. I don't...
It's a courtesy.
Yeah, but it's really not, there's not any great changes in this anyway to kind of clarify things.
Yeah, it's really, we really didn't make any changes that I'm aware of. And Pam, do you?
It really is the way we've been operating. The only thing is we've been going to the prior year's interest rather than the immediate year before, just to be safe. So it's not any different that we've really been operating at all, with that one exception.
We don't have to miss us.
Yeah, I would like to reinforce that point, because there's a trap in this in the latest audit has been presented, and that is, there's the original fund, which is a relatively small amount, and then there's a growth of the fund over time, which is a large amount. And then there's annual earnings, which is dividends and interest, and that's what we're talking about spending here. By recognizing that the growth of the fund over and above the original amount is spendable, I don't think we want to open the door to a grant for that money, which could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think we want to truly avoid that trap.
I think this does that.
I think the recommendation is what...
Yeah, this does, this does that.
It doesn't discuss that, but it does, it doesn't allow for it either. It doesn't allow for spending the growth.
It lays out what designated and undesignated funds are, which I assume is based on the will. The will says we can't touch the designated ones.
Correct.
Okay, so we know.
That's pretty much true of all the trusts.
Yeah.
And we've just had, we've had different numbers with different accounting practices and audit practices coming up with what the numbers are. And I think that now that we've got the audit of all the trusts and the identified designated and unidentified undesignated...
As I read it, all you can spend in a year is ten percent of what the fund made, less fees, and ten percent has to be reinvested?
Not, no, we can spend all of the income, less ten percent and less the fees.
And the ten percent will be reinvested?
And the ten percent will be reinvested?
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
Okay.
So you're growing it continuously by ten percent at least of what the growth was in an, that's a pretty good setup. That works pretty well.
That was recommended back quite a few years ago, and it kind of got lost in the shuffle.
How unusual.
Well, we're trying to unshuffle the shuffle.
Probably add a ten percent.
Sorry? Okay. Will your committee write up the others?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we, if, is everybody satisfied that we don't have to go to town with this? We could just, okay. All right, why don't you write up the other, we'll do them all at once, unless there's a rush to get this done.
No, I, I think just before monies are actually allocated by warrant at town meeting, you need to, we need to have guidance to make that decision for what the warrant's going to be.
The end of the year, we'll have the number of the dollars that are going to be available. So we'll stick that number, whatever that is, if it's, we'll just, it's their money.
Last year, we gave them a number that really wasn't based on anything, any accurate information, but this year we should have that in them.
Well, this year, we're going to have the actual earnings, dividends, and interest, and we'll just subtract the ten percent. I don't think the ten percent of management fees, I think when we get a statement, that's what it's going to be right there, ten percent. I mean, whatever it's going to be, but dividends and earnings is what it is. We can't calculate the expense of that, because there is no expense, we can take ten percent less. When you get your statement at the end of the year, from any corporate, from any place, your statement says dividends and interest, that's the number. Then they don't subtract their cost and...
Where do they take their fees out?
They take it right out of the account all year long.
Okay, I mean, my, so we're going to take, we're going to take out the ten percent after the fees have been paid, is that correct?
That's right. At the end of the year, and we can verify this, but at the end of the year, when you get, anybody, I think anybody gets their statement, at the end of the year, when you look at your statement and you've got fifty dollars in dividends and you've got two hundred dollars in interest, that's what it is. There's no fees left to be associated with, it's already happened all year long. So at that point, we would look at that number and say, okay, ten percent goes back in for growth, the rest of it's gone.
That's what...
We'll take, we'll put this in article before the voters to say, prove us giving you the money.
Apparently, if we just draw ninety percent of the interest and dividend...
That works too, yeah.
That's the amount that the treasurer draws from the account to turn over to the school.
Yeah. The only question I'd add, Jack, is I'd like to have us word this, and I thought I worded it that way, I've got to go back and look, to have that go into the designated fund, not the undesigned. So we're really putting it into the non-touchable principle?
The ten percent.
The ten percent.
Yeah, well, yeah. But if we just take ninety percent of the earnings out, then we've done that.
Well, no.
No, because it'll stay in the undesigned.
So, yeah, but we don't need the voter's approval to invest that ten percent, we just instruct the bank that we want ninety percent, ten percent is to be reinvested into...
It's left there.
Yeah. Well, if you leave it into the interest and dividend account, that's where it stays.
Oh, it is.
So we'd have to instruct them that ten percent is to be invested. Then we, then it's gone, off the books, and it's on the investment side.
I think Pam has a question.
I just have a timing question. We met and we built our budget, because our meeting is usually first Sunday in December, but we built it with parameters, because we didn't have the exact figure. Do you have, it's really two-part question, do you have any idea when we would have the exact figure?
January, should have, January 1st, and this, at this point, it'll be from Kennebec Savings, because I think it's, is it Kennebec, or is that where?
Last year's.
And we're finishing up the Kennebec Savings, and then January 2nd, we switch over to Florida.
How are they reporting it out, Carrie? Are they reporting it out by the individual funds, or are they reporting it out as a one lump sum?
Kennebec Savings reports it out as individual funds.
Which is what we're going to ask Bar Harbor to do also. So then, then that report is available from Kennebec Savings a couple of days after the first of the year?
Yeah. Okay. And then, I've always tried to turn in my report prior to January 1st, so this will delay that a little bit, because I won't, until I get the figures, I can't, is that, is that okay?
I guess, we could call Kennebec Savings and get that number, it may be a little, a little bit off, that's all. So if you're comfortable with a number that's off, two or three bucks possibly...
Oh, yeah?
Then we could call, Kennebec Savings can give us that number before the end of the year, because whatever's there is pretty much going to be what's there now.
Okay.
But you need her report for town report by, what, the 10th, the 20th of January or so?
Yeah. Oh, then that would be...
So you've got...
I think that it's January 6th that I have to have any... I've been operating a bit ahead.
I was saying January 20th now, I'm trying to give you a little more time.
There you go, all right, thank you. But she's very efficient, she won't miss the deadline.
No, no.
All right.
Let's take care of that, not for this one, anyway. Thank you.
Okay, we will, we will wrap up the other ones.
Good. Good. Good, thank you to you and your committee.
If this model seems to fit.
I guess, Howard, if you could, and I might have concern and pointed it out about designated and undesigned, can you use different wording there?
What...
I know it's the auditor's...
If that's what the auditor's using, why wouldn't that be...
How about in parentheses, what does that mean to us in this room? Because designated, undesigned, is it?
Well, I'm...
Interest and income, or...
Ten years from now, who's going to be looking at this? And will it be clear to them, they weren't here, they didn't talk to the auditors the way we did and all? And I'm just wondering if you put a worded parentheses following designated, as we're saying, something like unavailable funds, and then designated, undesigned, available funds, or something like that, clarify the meaning of it. It's not essential, but it's just a thought.
Let us work on it.
Good, thank you very much.
He did, he does define them in this last paragraph right here. He does tell us what they are.
Well, if they're defined there, then probably also...
If it's clear to everybody, I mean, I'm not insisting on it, I just thought it might be...
Whatever. And thank you, I appreciate you for moving me out. I don't want to decorate myself.
Anything, yeah. Is there anybody here other than Joe that's, to talk about something on the agenda?
Yeah, Becky's here, I hoped that...
Are you here?
I couldn't get an agenda, so I didn't know where the cost sharing issue came up like you.
We can do cost sharing.
Yeah?
Okay.
Will he be there again?
Yep, well, yeah. He said he would be here, he's not here yet, so I think Becky, Becky and I can handle it.
I don't have a problem, I didn't even know where it showed up on the agenda, sorry.
It's down the list, anyways.
It's quite well down the list, I wanted to, Denny saw that and figured he wasn't going to come up there.
Yeah, he might have, I don't know.
All right.
Can we give him another half hour? Yeah, let's, let's give Denny another half hour together.
All right, we'll wait, wait a little longer, Jack, for it out. Linda, are you, do you feel comfortable discussing it yourself, or is she on the show?
I don't know, I'll give it, my guy's, if she doesn't make it, get everybody else.
We'll give her a little while, and then we'll...
I thought I had her cell phone number, but I don't, so I was going to call her, get over here right away.
Yeah, they just turned down your budget.
I might have.
All right, let's go back up to top, old business, the assessors' RFP.
All right, so Becky and I, excuse me, combined, or I found the old RFP that had been used prior to, and we did decide to take some language out of the other one, particularly the, we changed the language as far as insurance, just to make it all consistent. And I think this, the other thing was I did include the evaluation criteria, how the proposals will be evaluated.
Is the faded out text, is that added, or...
That's the change, yes.
Those are added changes?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the last thing we decided to include also was the other expenses on the last page, because these are potential expenses that could be included for the town in terms of laptop, many conferences, news, mobile phone. And we're just asking whoever's bidding on this proposal to designate whether they're going to provide, or if they're expecting the town to provide that. And if they're expecting the town to provide that, what the cost would be, so those are the, those are the changes.
Questions? Questions, the man? Ready to vote on?
Yeah.
Motion made to accept, second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded to accept the request for proposal, the draft. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero, thank you. Okay, electrical, plumbing?
Which one you want first?
Well, the first one I'd grab is plumbing and heating, natural gas.
All right. So again, the faded out areas are the areas that were changed. We didn't make the new insurance language consistent with the assessors' RFP. I added a paragraph under contract obligations that were completed, has to be billed within thirty days, and all payments will be done by warrant. And I did put the timeline in there for when they have to have those submitted. And then I added that they need to maintain a log of their repairs that are performed by their service person, and that needs to be available to the town upon request, or the facilities director. The other thing we did is we amended the bid sheet a little bit, and all the information is in there as was prior to, with the exception of I did list the town facilities and both proposals actually, because sometimes you may have somebody bidding on this who doesn't necessarily know how many buildings they'll actually be taking care of. And that was it for this one.
I guess on the town facilities, if anybody, especially you, you see something that we might have missed for some reason, you're a little more familiar, we tried to make sure everything was listed there. Is, I guess, in looking at it now, is, are the dams that we're responsible for, is that something that we, is Dan doing work to go, or do that...
I don't think there's any power on any of them, is there? I don't think there's any power on any of them, is there?
We get built, we got, I noticed in the warrant that built are not super main power for some of the dams.
Maybe the one in the lakes?
Really?
Because the one in Offo gets all manual.
We get to warrant, go look at that, you had a question?
Yeah, I did see that too, and I wondered.
I wasn't sure what we're powering down there.
Okay, I'm trying to think, down there, it's probably got electric gate in it.
I think they both do.
What...
I don't, Whingmills doesn't know.
Does the dam committee take care of that contract anyway, I mean, that...
I think so.
I guess indirectly...
Should have been in their budget. We've never had anything on it yet that I can recall, I mean, I didn't even know it was paying a cent to me, bubble bill, so...
Right here. Do you think we need to add the dams?
For plumbing and heating?
No.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to heat it?
For plumbing and heating.
Plumbing might be important.
Think about putting generators in.
And you got the comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The other day, I didn't even, I didn't still remember, we talked about a phone station down in Hamilton, is that on the list?
No.
Yeah, the cemetery, so that should be the, cover that and other things, isn't it?
Easy enough.
That would fall into the cemeteries, Jack. If that happens, that should fall into the cemetery.
I would, I would assume that's it, but you know what, assume it does.
Well, you know, it could hurt just to add it.
Could.
Anyway, all right, that's a good point. Anything, any other comments?
Would be hard to add it right now, because we don't have it.
I would just leave it on the cemetery.
Motion made and seconded.
Seconded?
Seconded.
If there are no further questions, all those in favor? Five, zero, thank you.
Now you can talk about the...
Well, you got it, you got it in this one, you got dams in there.
Okay, good. It's good, huh?
I need to go inside, I need to go inside, Rick, would you kind of come in?
Yep.
And the same changes on this RFP as on the electric one.
Anybody got any questions on it?
A move that we accepted.
Anybody else got any questions? No, all in favor? Four and one, absent. Thank you. What do you want to move on to?
Resignation to town.
Resignation and appointments?
Do the resignation of the town clerk.
And all the appointments after that.
Oh, is it, man, I got it. Guess it's you, huh? I don't have it in my book.
Barbara Gagin has resigned her position, and she's taken another job up in the end of the year, as a tax collector, so she's resigned, and her last day of her career is December 10th.
Anybody want to make a motion and accept it?
So moved.
Who seconded?
You did.
Okay, I seconded. Got here just in time.
That's right. We're on the resignation of the town clerk, if you want to take it for man.
Okay.
We've moved and seconded it, that's beautiful.
All those in favor? With regret?
Yep.
Good, thank you. What do we do with the electric, will we pass that one to you?
No, we turned that down, we didn't want to do that.
And the electric one had dams in it too, so we all set.
That's why we turned it down.
Slide in. All right. Just do the...
One more, you got one more, right?
No, that was just for information, it came in this afternoon.
So if we don't need...
It's actually from the trustees, library trustees.
Unless you want to do it tonight, that's up to you guys.
What was it?
Library trustees, somebody, Dan Wright, a trustee, as a trustee.
Whatever, we could do it, get it done.
That's very informal, Lily, stuff that, I guess if you want to read it, like, you can go around the show and you can go on the guest...
Get it someplace.
I've got, I've got...
You got it someplace, too?
Yeah, it's in one of these pages, there it is, right there.
All right.
Town of Belgrade, to, Town of Belgrade, Vanna Patterson, public library trustee board, please accept this letter as my notice of my resignation from position as a trustee for the Belgrade Public Library. My last meeting will be December 28th, with Janet to fish, with Janet to finish out December trustee's report. It's been a pleasure, treasurer's report, excuse me, it has been a pleasure working with all of you over the last two years, I've enjoyed learning about the library and will continue to give some support. I will turn in my treasurer's binder, or some of Janet-wanted meeting document binder. Sincerely, Diane Wright.
Make a motion to accept this?
With regrets.
Second it.
Motion made to accept it with regrets.
Probably ought to do a certificate, we owe it to all people, two years or so.
Who's this for? I've got to be blunt here. All right, all those in favor? Five, zero. Okay. Oh, good. Well, I'm not waiting for her anymore, let's do the recreation.
Thank you, Mike.
See, we always get her man or woman.
Yeah.
Thank you for moving us up.
With new economy.
It's not what you said a few minutes ago, you said...
She doesn't get here soon. All right.
Well, we're going to read Article 18, whatever it is, recreation article, aren't you?
Yeah, article, whatever.
It's the first one for hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Seven eighty-seven, right. She'd be the voting, I'll have to read it. Any comments, questions?
Make a motion to accept it?
Motion made to accept, seconded. Any comments?
I take it that that reduction is, again, moving those articles out that shouldn't have been there in the first place, so we have a reduction.
And comments from the...
What are you looking at? Because I've got some paperwork in front of me, and the number that you just cited...
What's going to be two eighty-seven?
Is there...
We've removed some of the facilities.
Okay. So this recreation is for both programming and facilities?
Yes.
That budget I have, so I haven't seen the breakdown between programming and...
Do you want my copies?
I'm trying to look through this, it's been, I don't know, to try to go through the spreadsheets, but...
You know, I've got the programming spreadsheets, but I don't know how the total number breaks down between those and the other ones. Okay, so there, the budget is a little different, they're kind of lumped.
So you haven't had a chance to work any of this?
I haven't seen the facility information, I got just the programming information here. So, the paperwork that Valencia submitted, and I got copies of, had, we had, at the rec board meeting, increased her wage, her salary to adhere to the new salary.
There's no law.
I'm sorry?
The law was struck down.
Was it?
Yes.
Was struck down, yeah. The federal judge struck it down, it was illegal.
So we're going to have to go back and be, because we passed.
Well, we're going to get there, but that is struck down, so we're going to go back. She will have, she will be salaried, I guess.
So it will continue the?
The hourly wage, yes.
Oh, wait a minute, hourly, she's on a salary line here, so she will continue.
Oh, yeah, she has to, yeah, she has to move to, oh, no, she doesn't.
No, she doesn't, not if they struck down the law.
So you guys have to.
Well, we haven't, we haven't done that yet, but we can address that. The budget that you're looking at is one that she will be salaried, we haven't, we haven't got there, but I'm sure this board, rather than make a hourly wage, once we found out, because I brought the, I brought that to the attention of the town manager, that the federal judge had overridden Obama and says you can't, it's illegal to do that, so it was made perfectly clear that December 1st, it wasn't going to happen. So, we don't have to worry about the salaries, we can, she can continue to be a salaried for he, so, we just haven't had a chance as a group, and it hasn't been brought before us yet.
Right, but I'm wondering if that's really pertinent to do that at this point, because that law hasn't gone away, they've just.
Is the administration, are they going, are they going to take it to a higher court?
Becky, have you heard?
My impression from what I've read is that because of the change in administration, feeling is it's unlikely.
They're going to leave it?
The Trump administration will go to court, try to get the original, the old regulations upheld, so probably the court's ruling will probably effectively stand.
Okay.
Kind of what I saw.
So it'll be salaried, we won't have to increase that salary. Because the federal law says, you can't do it.
Other items, other questions?
The only other question that I have is whether or not a cost of living increase had been included in that 2016 salary figure of what is now 34957, or any kind of town increase.
We could give two percent for everybody.
Comments, questions from the board?
I think we ought to table this.
I do too.
Yeah, I think, so you can get a better look at it.
Well, we also need to address the fact that it's an app, well, because Becky knows, she's up to date on it too, but it was definitely very clear, national news, state news, that it was not going to happen, period, federal judge said it's illegal, based on the new people coming in to follow it down, we don't change that, that's kind of your understanding, right, Becky? So I think we need to back up and address that as a board.
They need to know what's. They need time to look at their budget and figure out.
Make sure everybody's on the same page.
I move, yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
There is a motion on the floor that has already been seconded. Not to table it, to open it up.
Oh, oh.
So I suspect that I would amend that to table this, until next meeting, I think.
I think you want to table overrides it anyway, I think.
Yeah.
Whatever, we're going to table it.
Yeah.
We're voting on table, all those in favor? Table it. Thanks for coming.
Can I get copies of these two pages and a copy of the warrant?
You need the whole thing, whole thing.
Yeah, I'll, can I email it to you?
Yeah, that would be great, that would be great.
You might want to come in and sit down with Carrie for just a bit on this.
So you understand the changes that she's making, so.
Yeah.
If you're not aware of what, things have been changed from what line to another line, you really need to get that information.
What I have is what Valencia gave us before she went on her medical, so other things have been changed or adjusted, I'd like to see those too.
Well, in order to, in order to honor the warrant articles as they had been written before, what I've had to do is, where we pulled all the facilities into a separate cost center, what I've had to do with some of the warrant articles like this one is I've had to pull those relative out for direct type facilities, for example, that's in the warrant article, so, yeah, it was an interesting exercise in mathematics, so, yeah, I think it would be really good if we could sit.
Okay.
I did go over the budget with Valencia before she left, so, and she wasn't aware of the changes, but the, she wasn't aware of most of the warrant article, to try and honor where those have been done and things.
Okay, so you can email those maybe next week, early in the, what time do you get here?
I get in at eight, but I can be here whenever you need me.
Eight's fine, I can stop and on my way to work and.
Sounds great.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Come again, anytime.
Yes. Merry Christmas, everybody.
You too.
And to you, Joe.
See you later.
Night now.
Thank you.
Ready to put, want to waste, continue to wait on cautionary?
Let's do the fireworks thing, we can do that, can't we? Need anybody here for that?
Give him another five minutes.
Nobody's here, but do it. All right, let's do the fireworks request, we have a request from the business group for the, for fourteen, forty-five hundred dollars, it's the, our usual donation for fireworks, we have a letter from, you should have one of them.
Yeah.
We had asked, we had tabled this, we recall, we had tabled this pending, an actual formal request.
Which, which budget was it under?
Recreation?
Social Services.
Social Services?
I guess I got a question, how come we didn't have it, if they'd sent it out that date, it didn't get mixed up in the mail or something, no?
No, they sent, they sent it out that, I went, after the meeting, I went down and said, hey, you need to have a formal request, and she sent it right out.
Well, she's got the date on it, November 28th, so it looks like.
I don't know, I don't know.
I'll be back for you.
I like it.
I can't answer that question.
So is that being added to social services on the Memorial Day and everything else?
Correct. So I'll have to rework those numbers for our article as well. So what I need from you folks tonight is just an acceptance of the request to be included in the budget.
Carrie, go.
The total of the spreadsheet for the.
Right, it was wrong.
Social Services is seventy-six thirty, and the warrant articles for ninety-three fifteen, and the spreadsheet includes the forty-five hundred?
Right, so I have to read what they are.
All would, no, we're just going to vote on this letter, we're going to accept it, but.
If we accept it, then she'll put it in the budget.
Okay.
What we're voting on?
I know, I know what we're voting on here.
Whether we're going to accept it or not. My question is, it's November 28th, and you went up on December, whatever it was, why is there a different date on it? Whatever, I don't care, you're going to be in a bunch of buttering if you don't.
I agree.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
You can second it, any further discussion? All those in favor? Budget committee, you voted on this?
This is just on the letter, so they won't tell.
You do a letter when the warrant article comes up, recommend it on.
Got you, all right, thank you, so we would sit, voted to accept the letter.
Yes.
Forty-five hundred dollars, that's what they've been asked the last several years, so.
Benny is on his way, so.
All right, we'll wait, we'll do another, let's do appointment of the town clerk. Appointment of the town clerk. You want to report on your, maybe maybe.
We had two people apply for the town clerk's position, one person was unqualified, and we decided to not speak with that person, the other person had town clerk experience, both as a town clerk and as a deputy clerk, totally about, was it seven years, so, we interviewed her yesterday, Gary Marler, Cheryl Cook, our treasurer in line, and we checked references, and references came back, that she, it sounds like she would be a good fit, she's very competent in what she does, so I would like to appoint her as our new town clerk, her name is Joyce Tilson.
Have we done a background check or anything like that, or do we do them on people that work in here?
Only after they've been hired.
Really?
Well, after we've been, we, we check it, once we agree that this is the person, then we check.
So what happens if you hire them and the background come back?
Well, no, I mean, once she does the background check, then she can hire, but we have to say, yeah, go ahead and hire them.
We're waiting for it to come back.
We have to give our approval, that's all we're going to have, but she won't actually hire her until you have the information.
They always did, they have been checking.
All she's done so far, charity probation or something.
Yeah, she's been on probation too. Whatever, I guess.
Will she be accepted as town clerk?
Motion made to accept, is there a second? Made and seconded. Any other discussion? Did you, did you have anything to say?
Oh, no, I just thought that there's a period of probation, and if something floated to the top, that was, you know, a disagreeable.
There is a period of probation.
Ninety, ninety day probation period.
Thought it was.
Excuse me, excuse me.
So where is this person from?
She actually is living in Anson right now, but she'll be staying with her brother in Reefield temporarily until she finds housing, she's actually looking at a place up in Belgrade.
Is she working as a clerk now?
She is not. She resigned her position in Newport recently.
In Newport?
Yeah.
I happen to know the fire, the police chief up there.
Well, the police chief is one that, that was her.
That was her reference.
References.
Yeah, I know him pretty well. In fact, I know the fire chief.
She had, and her references were good, she looks, she looks pretty good.
Did you talk to him up there?
I couldn't get a hold of him, I talked to the town manager.
Okay.
And she actually came from Water Hall before she went to Newport.
Her work history was fairly good, she put four to five years per job, up until her Newport job, which was very short-lived, and, she just looked pretty good.
She's certified as a town clerk.
Well, the committee liked her, so I think we need to.
And she's got, we got six months.
Absolutely.
You don't have a choice.
Absolutely.
We've heard that before, so what are we even talking about it for?
Well, I mean, it's worth talking about.
Well, it's just kind of, I mean, it's good that I think you have a kind of good feel, I wasn't there during the interview, and I kind of like get a little bit brown, but when you meet somebody for the first time, you kind of know, a little bit of a puff of history.
Very personable.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Five zero.
So we also need to appoint Joyce as Fisheries, and then Fisheries and Wildlife Agent and register voters.
About the motor vehicle agent, that's a separate deal, okay. Okay, we're going to, we won't, we appoint her for Fisheries and Wildlife Agent and register voters, we do one vote.
How, how can we vote for this until she's here?
How can you what?
How can we vote, we don't, the background check hasn't come back, I mean, we don't a hundred percent know, you're voting for somebody you don't even know yet, I mean, don't, not even working for us yet.
These are just assigned duties.
Well, yeah, but.
If she doesn't make it, she, I mean, it's.
Whatever, if you guys want to do that, that's fine, I don't think that's the right way to do it. I never got appointed to be a frigging foreman until I got the job, correct?
When she kind of.
I don't know.
Well, just telling you.
I don't know.
I don't agree.
She's going to come to orientation tomorrow.
Won't she actually?
I know I'm right, but I'm not going to, I, I just.
Well, she's going to be working here Monday, Rick, so just.
Well, she's available Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and my intention was to get the background check back tomorrow, because it usually takes a day or so, I just interviewed her yesterday, and the advantage to doing that is she would have three days with Barbara, who's an existing clerk, who could show her where everything is, and get her logins and passwords, her trio, and get her the permissions and stuff she needs as well.
Did she perform these duties up in Newport?
She did.
So she's going to do it in Newport.
You can vote for it, I'm going to vote against it, I don't think it's right.
All right, motions on, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved, we give it those duties.
Seconded, I'll second it, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to vote for it, because we've got to have somebody in there that can do that, so.
I'm voting against it.
Four in favor, one against. Thank you very much.
So motor vehicle agent, Melanie has agreed to take on that responsibility, she's, again, she's a certified clerk, she knows how to do it, so it just makes sense, and which is already a tax collector, she really should be the excise tax collector as well, which is part of the motor vehicle agency.
Will she be given those responsibilities?
Moved, seconded.
I'll second that, she's working for us.
Well, we haven't done a background check on this one.
I don't care.
All right.
We want to do illegal stuff, go ahead, I don't give a shit, I'm not voting for it.
You're right, Rick, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be kidding about that. All right, all those in favor?
Oh, yeah, I'm in favor.
Five, five zero, thank you.
So how do you feel about making Anthony the Freedom of Access Officer?
What is that?
DFOAA officer, anytime anybody makes a request for information under the office staff, that would be on, Freedom of Access one.
Yeah.
We have to have, we have to have somebody.
Yeah, whatever.
I'm tired of moving, so somebody else can do it.
Somebody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Have you been, has he been to any of the courses?
No.
You can take it online, I think, can't you?
Yeah, you just have to read it frequently, those questions, so they can.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion, all those in favor? Five zero. Congratulations, Anthony.
Good luck.
The whole time I've been selecting, we've only had two requests that I can think of, and I'd say we'll have twenty for next week, so.
The town I came from, I had multiple requests, Becky knows. I know FAA well.
Okay. Schedule of public hearing for commercial development review ordinance.
The planning board is getting ready to bring that, for the public hearing, so they can have the ordinance on the town meeting warrant in March, and it just makes sense to try to do that when you do your public hearing for the town meeting warrant, and I tentatively have that scheduled for January 17th, so you can vote on this, that acceptable.
At what time?
At 2:00 6:30. It's prior to your regular meeting.
January the what? January the what?
Seventeenth.
At 6:30 at night, right?
Hey, it is, Benny. We could set that for six o'clock, I mean.
We usually do.
Yeah, I think, we usually do is six o'clock when there's a public hearing, and just, so that doesn't, what if they have a minute, it's a big agenda.
I think there was one planning board member that had a heart to getting there at six o'clock, I'll double check it out.
I don't think it's going to be a big deal anyways, it'll probably be three people there, maybe four.
So the seventeenth is the date we've got for the budget information meeting also?
Yeah.
Let's shoot for that, we got everything ready we can.
Now, is it in the center, over here?
How many people usually come?
I think you could do it here.
You'll have enough room.
No, we can open up that couple doors. No, we can open up that couple doors.
Yeah.
Put about the hallway. I mean, we had those hearings, Danny. I mean, we had those hearings. Maybe same here?
One year.
Well, yeah, we might have had a few that one year.
Yeah, but that's because we... We're causing trouble.
It might have been.
Back to RSU.
You wanna go back? Yeah, let's go back to, uh...
Or you just wanna represent the bottle box applications and quit?
All right, bottle box, bottle...
I don't see a problem with that. I'll make a motion to accept it.
Seconded.
The three that are there now. Okay. All those in favor?
Isn't there four on that list though?
Three. There are four on the list, but there are three boxes.
Okay.
And the, the policy says that...
Yeah, I remember that.
The ones that are there.
That's right.
Okay, good. Now, RSU eighteen, cost sharing. Can we go there now?
Yeah. The, uh, cost sharing committee is, uh, is completed. The, the committee met and discussed how to share, uh, about three point eight million dollars that are for non-essential funds. Uh, the members of that committee from Belgrade were Dennis, Becky, and myself. They met four times. Uh, the way the cost sharing goes right now for the non-essential funds is that seventy-five percent of that is funded from valuation. Twenty-five percent is funded from student, or for the number of students. Uh, initially, the, the meeting started the first night, uh, Andy Cook from Rome leaped into the fray and said that that ought to be funded at a hundred percent students, which would have been extremely beneficial to us. We would have saved about three hundred thousand dollars if that were the case. So, we continued on through the process. Uh, we looked at a number of different ways to split it up. Fifty-fifty, uh, seventy-five student, twenty-five percent valuation. Uh, on the fourth night, Sidney, I believe, moved that they, they retain the present valuation system, which is seventy-five percent valuation, or their sharing system, seventy-five percent valuation, twenty-five percent students. And tossed into that was local debt. Now, right now, there is, RSU eighteen is looking at trying to get the facilities either up to standards, build a new facility. They have five different ways they're looking at this. And because there's no state money to do that, that will be considered local debt. Up until this meeting, local debt had been shared, a fifth, a fifth, and a fifth. In other words, we would pay twenty percent of local debt, as would the other four towns. Uh, now, the way the, the committee closed out, we will, they'll, they're going to readjust that so that it's seventy-five percent valuation, twenty-five percent students. We have the second lowest number of students in the five, the five-town area, uh, but we have very high valuation, which is why we pay so much in taxes. Uh, I was disappointed. I was interviewed by the Sentinel, I think, two nights ago. They had, they had a, an article this morning in the paper. I said I was disappointed. I thought that, uh, that the other three towns could have done a little bit to alleviate Belgrade and Rome's inordinate amount of taxes that we have to pay to the school. It didn't happen that way. So, the way it stands right now, that is the decision of that committee. There was, on the part of Rome, they wanted to go back to the school board, have them convene a new, a new committee to go back and look at the same problem again. I, I was initially for that. I think now, I think it'll be just another vote, uh, and it'll stand the way it is right now. So, that's, that's kind of the, the outcome of the committee, which I thought was disappointing. Uh, and Denny and Becky, if you've got something to add, please do so. Actually, let me, Becky did come up with an attempt at a last-minute save. She was moving into a fifty-fifty split, which would have saved us a fair amount of money, uh, but that was not gonna be heard. It was just dismissed and they went on to the vote.
Actually, what I, what I was trying to suggest, but I think I didn't articulate it clearly enough, or maybe loudly enough, I was proposing that maybe we find a way that we would alternate formulas so that no single town or group of towns could take it year after year. And we had a chart that, I don't know if it's Gary who put it together, uh, that showed what the differential would be if we changed to different percentage formulas in the future compared to what it is now. And the fifty-fifty split, and then the one that Andy was promoting, the hundred percent student valuation, seemed like, uh, you know, what was negative for Belgrade under one formula would be positive for Belgrade under the other formula. So, I thought, well, maybe we could explore that, but it was pretty clear that by the time we got to the meeting last week, uh, most people were ready to be done with the process and, and to move on. And, and just on the, on the debt issue, I mean, currently, the, the debt is shared equally, and that's the Mezzalineski Middle School debt. But the consolidation plan actually says that any debt assumed after July first of two thousand nine would be a portion based on the cost.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
So, that would be seventy-five, twenty-five. So, they basically, the majority of the committee voted to maintain status quo with on debt and, and the, you know, additional local funds.
Okay.
So, just, just so you'll understand a little bit of the history, when we went into the formation of the RSU, remember, our obligation to the MSAD forty-seven was based solely on property value. So, when Jack was a part of the group of formation, Becky and I, when we set it, settled down on the RSU fourteen, eighteen, and we developed that, we went with seventy-five percent valuation, twenty-five percent student population, for essential programs and services, that portion of it. Uh, and then there was the additional local fund plus cap debt, right? Uh, it was seventy-five, twenty-five. Uh, and so, we were, when you look at it, we were, uh, we were doing better, or we should have been doing better, but we had a larger program now because we have five revenue force schools. So, when we went to this meeting, I was, along with Andy and virtually all of us that were opposed to the current status quo, seventy-five, twenty-five, looking at the fairness equity issue. So, certainly, we have, our town has got the highest valuation. That's, uh, not disputed. Uh, but we also have the second lowest, uh, median income for family of four out of the five towns. We also have one of the highest median household costs, it's about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars per year for the median value of our homes. So, when you, I was working out some ratios, but when you work it out, Belgrade residents, on the average, were at the meeting, are paying more out of their lower incomes, more of their incomes for their housing. You put additional taxes on that, that creates a, creates disparity. So, during this whole process, at the beginning, we felt we were, quite frankly, I had forgotten about how the, uh, the debt had been, uh, shared. But as we were going through it in the first meeting itself, it came up that, once they incurred more debt, that debt would be incurred at a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent based on the, on the plan. And I said, well, it doesn't sound fair or equitable. There was a debate about what that meant. Uh, to, to do that, is there a way? Because my concern was certainly, even if, when you look at Gary's chart, and unfortunately we can't project it, but when you look at the chart, what he was saying is, look, going to a hundred percent student valuation actually brings the cost per student for each of the towns roughly into equity, if you look at the additional local funds as you equate that. Any of the, I think the maximum we would have saved on that is three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, that's right.
So, I, you know, we would save something on that, and whatever it came out to, it would be something. But my big concern is the additional local debt. We're being told that it could be anywhere from twenty to forty million dollars.
But it was ten to seventy.
Well, ten to seventy, but he came down at the end to, uh, probably more likely twenty to forty million dollars, which means that roughly for us, about six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand additional per year. Uh, that's a problem. That's the bigger bulk of it. So, I was looking to kind of ameliorate that aspect. Uh, I think all of us were. But you know, in a democracy, a pure democracy, it's defined as, uh, two wolves in the land looking for what's best eat for supper.
We were the lambs.
In this situation, there's three towns that benefit from the, uh, high valuations of both Rome and Sidney, I mean, Rome and Belgrade. And they outorder it, it's pure and simple.
Well, the vote, the vote was eight to five. The five that voted no, us three and two from Rome.
Now, there was, you have to understand, Andy was looking at the whole thing from, uh, what he figured was, if you value your students, towns will be...
You pay for them.
Yeah. I thought that that was noble.
Yeah.
But unlikely to happen. I was trying to argue that there are poor people in the town of Belgrade. No matter how you look at it, poor people in the town of Belgrade are getting hurt, uh, as all poor people get hurt, but Belgrade seem to be getting hurt more. But that argument didn't fly, and so it was a majority vote, severely simple.
Danny, you talked about having to come up with figures and putting into a, kind of a chart, and I don't remember that the committee ever received any of that information directly.
Well, I, I spoke to, I mean, my figures.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I never put it together because I just threw out the numbers that I had. And I, I was using data that was off the web, that was two thousand fifteen data, fourteen, fifteen data, and I was hoping that people would say, well, let's look at that and we can find better data. But...
So, where do we go from here?
There, there's little that you can do. The only thing that could happen now is if, for whatever reason, the committee decided to reconsider its vote. I don't think that's likely what's going to happen. The, the problem from my perspective with this whole thing, the way it's set up, is that these two towns, Belgrade and Rome, will probably not be as positive, have such as, as big of a positive feeling toward new construction that might be needed for the school. They might not be as willing to vote for a larger budget. And so, it's hurting in the long-term students because, you know, I mean, you put an extra five thousand, or five hundred thousand dollars a year on our community, on the debt.
And I heard the parents saying.
Yeah, I mean, so you're really starting to say, wait a minute, we may not be able to, so...
No folks.
Rather than moving together and hopefully getting to a, a better facility perhaps in the future where we could all agree on, on, but that, that would meet that need? I think it'd be more, probably argued more for him.
Just, just on the buy the growth. You want that buy the growth anymore? Those people are hurting. They've been there forever. They didn't get no raise last year in their social security. You know, what point, what point does this town and these people step in and say, hey, hold it, timeout, enough is enough? And there is another alternative.
Well, there is another alternative, but right now, we're talking about the, well, all kinds of alternatives.
Yeah, well, you know what? You run out of time if you don't get the alternative in motion because, once we've got the debt, we're stuck with it.
Well, I believe we have to vote on the debts.
Yeah, there has to be a vote.
There has to be a vote.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it's all the towns.
Becky's got a...
One thing I just wanted to say in terms of the debt issue, Gary has been exploring with some of the state DOE officials, with somebody named Scott Brown, I think, who deals with the, um, the school construction issues. Apparently, the traditional kind of state funding for school construction projects are RSU would be way down the list just because there's hardly any money being put into that program. But he, this, Mr. Brown indicated that there's an existing fund. We've been spending, uh, spending money through a revolving renovation loan fund for a variety of things, to do smaller projects, different schools, and I don't know how many years we've been doing that. And there is some money as part of that that we have to pay back, but much of that, that loan is forgiven and the interest rate is significantly lower. So, Gary was told that there's a priority three fund, that if, if more money were put into that, it might be the, you know, this, I know it's not a total solution because there's still extra money that would be, um, it would befall the taxpayers, but it would be much less of an obligation than the traditional kind of bond issue that, that we're all concerned about, so. But to get that extra funding into this priority three program, I think it's gonna require some people to work with legislators, make them aware of that, and get them to sort of, you know, put on a full-court press to, to focus on that as a way to help the variety of school systems around the state who wanna do construction when they can't afford to do it totally at taxpayer, you know, local taxpayer expense. I realize that everybody is digging into their pockets, whether it's the state money or the local money, but the hit is harder and more directed, it's coming out of the local property tax, so. So, that's something that maybe would be worth meeting with Gary Leern and Tom Saviallo to talk to them about that fund, if they're not aware of it, and see if maybe they would do something. I think the other towns in the district would do the same thing with it.
Well, I, I appreciate the fact that you pointed out the census and where we stand on it. A lot of people, you know, Belgrade's a rich town. Well, you know, lucky, we do have a lot of rich property, but you know, it's killing the people that live in this town year-round. It's just killing us. And I, I, I can only, I can only relate to the people that live within one mile. And there's a bunch of them, and they are just suffering so bad. And yet, every time we have a chance to cut something out of the budget, oh, well, we gotta have that. Oh, we gotta have that. You know, it all adds up. And these people, they, they just, they don't go out deep, they, they can't, they can't buy any extras at all, and they have to give everything up. And now, now we're looking at such an increase from the school. It's gonna, that's gonna be huge.
Well, the point, as you mentioned, is revolving renovation fund, if we can get more funding into that, is that the bond issue that Denny's talking about wouldn't be the big bond issue of the type that you're thinking about. It would be a significantly lower amount that would be, have to go to voter approval and be funded by, you know, the tax dollars. I don't have the, because we haven't reached that point in the facilities committee.
Becky, can one, can one town vote that, uh, bond issue down?
The new construction, I think that's...
Well, I think that the revolving renovation loan money is, uh, has the, the majority of the district, so one town necessarily...
So, three would have to vote for it.
It's the number of people who vote.
Depends on how many people...
Okay, I got you.
I don't wanna...
I got you, yep. Yep, that's right.
If we get ninety-five percent of our people have to vote, Sydney only gets forty percent. It's not by town.
Jason, yes, sir. So, just something, just quick. So, local control still is preferable over state-level control for the Department of Education?
Well, when you think about it, as we move to the MSAD, then to the RSU, you're giving up more and more specific local control, the schools to get the control. And we have two votes, two members on that school board. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
We have how many votes? One and two-thirds? Is that what we've got?
Well, it's proportionally, I think you know.
There's a weighted vote formula in the reorganization...
I think Rome's got a half a vote.
Even though you have two board members, you don't get two completely...
That's right. You get a percentage of votes.
I think Denny nailed it. You got the wolves out there, and we are the meat on the table, and they're gonna take advantage of the easy prey. It's just that simple.
So, just remember, all right, we're in the school, then, we should all be thinking about what's good for the students, all right? I, and I, I said at the meeting, I said, I don't think there's anyone in any town that you go to, when you go up and you ask them, don't you think we should give our students a good education? Everyone would say yes. So, the issue is, how do you get that good education? And just putting money in it doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna have better education. We know that as a fact. So I, you know, I hate to, I hate to be negative about this whole thing, but it was pointed out by a couple of folks from Oakland that said, well, you know, we could vote, go back to a hundred percent valuation on this question of the.
And they could've.
And they could've.
They could've.
On both Oakland that and that. They could outvote us. But they were doing us, in their view, kind of a, you know, we're, we're not gonna do that because we recognize that there has to be some, you know. So that's where we're at on, on the organizational plan that we have. Now, we could petition to have the plan changed, but you'd have to get ten percent of the votes within the district to sign the petition and you'd have to come up with what you want to change to. And I don't know whether that's unreasonable.
Well, you need a petition to get the cost sharing formula.
Well, we could change the plan.
Well, actually, that was the issue that Gary raised the other night. Drummond Woodson, the firm that does a lot of school representation, I've had this conversation with one of their attorneys. There's no clear provision in the statute that talks about how you amend the consolidation plan once you adopted it. And it just makes common sense to me that if there's a process laid out to develop and adopt the initial plan, then you follow that same process to amend the plan. And given that Gary the other night raised that issue again, maybe that needs to be clarified in state law. So there's no, no question about it. I don't think our, I don't think our plan itself addresses the revision to the, to the plan, you know, amendment to the plan, talks about the cost sharing process.
I think Jack's got a question.
Question, actually, it's, it's two questions. And I'm not up to date with, with, you know. But how is this up to forty million or something, maybe whatever the number is? How is that money, just in general terms, supposed to be spent, number one? And number two, what happened to the notion that we have, we're, we're in a structural decline of the school population? How do we relate, relate one from the other?
First question, they have five plans, five, five separate alternatives to upgrading the facilities. The lowest one being that they just upgrade the facilities they presently have, which would be Belgrade Central, Bean School, the Meselonsky complex up there. They would just bring them up to standards. They're not at standards right now. The second one would be to move, and, and we're affected by this, would be to move all the kids out of Bean School and Belgrade Central into the complex. They would put them in middle school and the K through two that they've got in there. The third one, I forget, all the way up to building a, a new complex for all students to go to. So they're gonna, they're gonna try to go with one of those five plans. And they have a committee that looks at a capital improvement committee that has been looking at this for quite a long time. As we finished this committee, they had come up with these five plans. So that's, that's how they're gonna spend the money, either upgrading the present facilities or building new ones. Your second question was.
I've heard again and again at meetings here in Belgrade that there's this.
Over the next five years, we look. We do, we, over the next five years, we will decline in the number of students. If their projections are right, and they probably are, so we'll have a declining number of students. The other, the other part of the equation is valuation. There is some feeling, as I understand it, that the state's valuation will, will cause, will, will go down this year or this coming year. How that happens, I have no idea. But that's, there's some feeling that that's gonna happen, which will lessen our burden a little bit, I guess. Yeah.
Can I, can I just say, this, this plan that we did, well, the scenarios that have been identified by this facilities committee, I think is posted on the RSU website, but I can, I can send this by email to anybody who wants it or you can request it from the central office. But the process, I think, that's gonna play out from here is the, the school board will hold a number of public meetings in the different towns and, you know, make these, and discuss these scenarios with whoever chooses to attend and get feedback. I don't think, the school board hasn't voted on any of these as they recommended approach. And other people may come up with yet another scenario. So, so as Gary said, some of the scenarios talk about consolidating all the towns on this side of the river. And China would have a combined primary middle school in virtually all the scenarios. That would be what happens on the China side. On this side, it would be closing, one scenario was closing Atwood, moving all those kids to Williams and doing an expansion on Williams. And that's similar to the proposal back in 2010. And the fifth graders under several of these scenarios would all be moved up to the middle school to occupy that extra space. And then, so in terms of why are we thinking about reconstruction if we, if we are trying to save money and care back? I think the idea is that if we're closing some schools and trying to consolidate, some of the proposals would be to merge into one of the existing buildings. Another proposal would be to build another building essentially located to those towns that would have to send their kids to that new consolidated school. So I can get you, Jack's expressing interest. I don't know who else would like to see this, but I can give you ranges to get, get copies of these too, so you can see exactly what they're.
Isn't that on Basecamp?
Yeah, people who have the password to get on Basecamp can, can look at it there.
But I think if you want to get on that, Jack, they'll set you up on that.
All the central office and ask to be.
And you get everything that happens.
From the facilities committee.
Yeah.
Just to, just to point out, the values shown, I think there's values showing the rate for cost. None of these facilities plans that they're investigating right now show any savings. So if there's costs shown with them, they're probably higher than they would be because they're not, they haven't calculated any savings. Just one other point I'd like to point out is, I asked what it would cost per student if we were to say, and I'm not suggesting this at all. I was just trying to do a rough calculation in my head. If we were to withdraw from the union, we obviously don't have a school so you'd have to pay to have your kids go there or wherever they wanted to go. It's roughly, I think it's seventy-five, say roughly, seventy-five hundred dollars to, for the middle school folk or the little kids. And it's eighty-five hundred for seven through twelve or something like that.
I thought the average was eleven thousand.
No, 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 that's the cost right now with everything included. But that only is the cost of sending the kids to school. Say roughly eighty-five hundred on the average.
Yeah, but that, that's, that is a negotiated cost when you.
It's, it's what the state requires.
The state requires, but you have to negotiate with whoever you're trying to send them to.
I'm pointing, my point up is that that does not include transportation or debt, which we get hit with. So you'd be, in my really back of the envelope, I mean, really back of the very small envelope calculations, roughly about, you'd have to come up, you'd save just on the education about, say, one and a half million dollars. But that would have to go toward whatever the capital costs. I don't know if there would be any savings. I just, just throw that out.
Just, just to save you a little bit of time, Danny, and I don't remember the exact numbers. We had a committee that worked on that and if we, we felt that, and again, my opinion is, we withdraw from RSU, the town would save about a million dollars. And what is it gonna cost us to take this school down here? We, we figured based on the data was what, five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars to bring it up to speed? And then it costs, we figured, we figured that the town would be further ahead and we would be in control of our local school and we could send our schools' school choice. And who knows? I can't look at the crystal ball into the future, but it looks like our new government, new leadership and government, they're gonna have voucher syst, they're gonna try to do more charter schools, more voucher systems. And I don't know what impact that's gonna have, what opportunities that's gonna provide with the communities. But I, I just think that Belgrade, you know, I don't care who you go to. The person can be ready to lose their house and they will say, yeah, we wanna see our kids get a great education. But you know what? I need my home. And so we gotta look at both sides of this with the same value because we have people, so many retired and old people in this town, they're right on the edge. And we have a lot of, most of us in this room, we don't, I'm not worried about making my, my taxes, but I don't want to see them go up. But I mean, still, I don't, I don't worry about that. And I can go buy what I want. I, I can eat what I want. But it's these old people that, we need to look at those too really hard, just the same way we look at our children. You know what? If we can give our children, if we can really analyze this, give our children a really good education and be, be in control, back in control and get the hell out from underneath somebody just eating us up, we've been here, we've begged with them. I think you people have done a hell of a job. You're up there saying, geez, you know, you can't, we just can't take anymore.
We are, I think, if the numbers hold true to when I was town manager, I looked at the average age. And our town is the oldest, I think, of the five towns. But I'm not recommending to throw up from the RSU. I mean, I would have to look at the numbers pretty hard to make that, to make that decision for me. I'm not doing that at all. I do think that the other towns need to understand our dilemma as well. And we tried to present it and, you know, I mean, there may have been some sympathy there. But remember, it's like, I think at least two of the three towns that voted, maybe all three of them, said, we can't go back.
I saw no sympathy there, Danny.
With an increased tax.
No sympathy.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying? That's what they sent me to say.
What can you recommend, Danny?
Well, you know.
I mean, it's wonderful to say that you would want to have them be sympathetic, but they're not.
No, I'm saying, I, I don't think I, I saw any sympathy based on the fact that they don't want to go back to their citizens and say, we just voted to reduce taxes. And I just think that that's, you know what? If I was in Oakland, I'd do the same thing. I'm not, I'm not.
Why wouldn't you? I mean, think about it.
We made, we made the deal back when we sent the RSU. Whether or not we saved money with the seventy-five, I think that was a fairly good deal that the group struck, seventy-five, twenty-five. I would like to think on the additional monies, it's as Andy Cook said, that twenty-nine, thirty million dollars that the seventy-five, twenty-five is kind of locked into, that's the essential programs and services aspect of it. That's probably all right for us to do. And I mean, we are, we do have a lot of value in towns. Where they could look at giving us a little break would be on the debt and the additional local funds. The additional local funds being three point eight million dollars that Gary talked about and the additional debt. But, but that's not where they're at. And I don't think that's what we're looking for.
I just would like to inject one other thing. You know, when you look at our budget, if we get a one percent, if, if the RSU goes up one percent, that's a three percent increase on our budget to the schools. And I, I believe our budget was roughly.
Six hundred?
Twenty million. Oh, six, six million, yeah, six million or seven.
Three point one, I think.
Yeah, it's six point something. So you figure every time that goes up one percent, we go, we go up three percent. So that's three percent is a big, that's a big number. It's just, it's a huge number. And we've been, we've been getting hit. Couple, three years ago, we got hit with a nine percent, impacted us with a nine percent increase. And that phone's probably still ringing.
Just, just to say, on the state valuation going down or what? I don't know what has been happening to the value of housing in our district, in our.
That was Gary that, that brought that up. And I don't know whether he's right or not either.
Well, I don't know either because if, if the value, our, our value right now, when I left back in 2010, I think the valuation was six hundred and one million dollars for the town of Belgrade. We were third highest, I think, at that time. Now we're fourth. We dropped down to five hundred ninety-one million or five hundred eighty-three million. I can't remember the exact number right now. Now, if that drops a little bit further, that doesn't mean we'll go below because I think we're a couple hundred million above all the other towns, at least a hundred million. So, so I don't know if it'll give us that much relief, but it could give us some.
Well, the relief really comes from, I think last year we got a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Hundred seventy-three.
Hundred seventy-three from the state. That's our relief. Otherwise, I mean, we're still stuck with that big chunk.
Rome got zero.
Rome got zero and Oakland got like four million?
Yep.
I'm just also sharing with that whole formula, if you look at the population projections, student population projections, Belgrade is projected to be losing students.
Over the next five years.
At a greater rate than the other towns, which means we're gonna get a higher percentage of the overall budget thrown on our lap.
Well, if, if we're looking at bonding that could go up in the forty million dollar range or even a good piece of that, and we're looking at a declining school population, I presume somebody is looking at the consequences of doing nothing. Because I haven't heard that discussed at all.
Yes, it's one of the scenarios in this. It's one of the scenarios in this, other than doing what's necessary to meet state fire code, you know, state farm marshal's office, Rich McCarthy was on this committee and wearing a state farm marshal's office hat, he was part of a team that inspected all the buildings and he had a list of things that have to be brought up to code. And so that's what the scenario that referred to is doing nothing is just.
And that's the lowest cost.
And that's the one.
Doing, saying nothing is the lowest cost in the shortest term. In the longer term, it could cost you more money. I mean, these are complex issues. I, I certainly don't know how it's gonna work out.
So, so.
If you remember when the Atwood School was trying to close, I mean, Oakland was right. I mean, they were out campaigning.
Yep.
I mean, and that, it didn't happen. I mean.
That would've been a cost savings there.
It didn't happen.
They wouldn't allow it to happen.
No, that's right. Absolutely not.
Okay, so that's our report. I think we've talked about it to some extent. As for future plans, Andy has invited us to go to the school board meeting tomorrow night and harass Becky. No, I guess that's not why we're going. But to sit in, he has, he is extremely upset over this. He's kind of the driver on the school board, as I understand it. Or at least he talks a lot. He's a pretty good guy. So I think I'm gonna go just to see what he has to say. But there, I don't see, I don't see the three of us proposing that they reconvene another committee.
Well, that would have to be somehow.
Well, I, according to Andy, he knows how to, to do that. But anyway, we have, we went, we met, we voted the right way, we were outvoted. I don't know what we're gonna do from this point on. So unless you three, unless you two have other.
I would, I would like to say for the record that Charlie Clark, one of the China board members, was the one who proposed an alternative of a seventy-thirty split.
To give us meaning.
And, and, yeah, in an effort to recognize that Belgrade and Rome deserve a little break.
Yeah.
And one of his select people was livid because he felt like Charlie sprung that on the group without letting the select board consider it. But I just wanted to make everybody aware that, you know, somebody from one of the benefiting towns.
He was, he's from China, right?
He's from China.
He's back on the school board?
Yeah.
And he was really brought to task over that by the select board member, which I didn't understand. They're both elected.
He's a good guy to have on the school board. He's not bashful.
So, that's it.
What, what time and where is the meeting in March?
The meeting is in China tomorrow. It starts at.
It's in China?
It's, it, no, the meeting's, yeah, we alternate locations sometimes.
It's Thursday night, I believe, not tomorrow.
It's Thursday night.
He is always the first and third Wednesday of the month.
It just always breaks, Danny.
December seventh.
Not sure I'm going.
It's in China. It starts at seven o'clock in the China middle school. And it's the sixth item on the agenda, but the, you know, the first five are pretty quick items out of the Gary's super town's report.
Just remember, the school board doesn't vote on this. The committee's through, the vote's done. The only other thing that could happen is somehow we could get reconvened. And I don't see that happening.
Wasting your time.
Well, if you did reconvene, there's no prospect of the voting.
No, the only reason people reconvene is.
Just wasting your time?
Well, all right, I guess we're done for now.
Well, Mike, you can, can, you can rest assured that, I mean, we're all part of the same school union and kids do need to get educated. So we could feel good about that.
I don't think anything would change. I really don't see how things, because you're gonna find the kids out. And they're probably gonna go to Meselonsky anyways. So it doesn't matter. They're gonna get the.
Yeah, but that's, that's a conversation for some others. We, we reported out, that's what we wanted to.
Thanks to the committee.
You'll get our bill.
All I can say, Gary, is thank you very much.
Well, that works. Couldn't have done it. That, they really, it really was well done on our part, regardless of the outcome.
Thank you, guys.
And Rome was right in there with this all the way, so. And Becky fighting.
Well, my biggest frustration was I, and maybe you both have a different perspective. I felt like there wasn't as much discussion as a committee at the public meetings as I would have liked. There was a lot of information posted on Basecamp, which is very helpful and a good way to get the information out. But then there was a lot of dialogue through Basecamp, which I think isn't compliant with the right to know law. But, but in any case, I would have liked to have more discussion, have more of an analysis of figures on that median income factor.
I got to set up a discussion.
Yeah, and seriously look at, do more comprehensive analysis of what other, other areas you're doing.
I think the outcome would have been exactly the same.
You're probably right.
But you get, in five years, you get to do it again.
I agree. And guess who ain't gonna be here for that?
You're gone.
I don't think you need the ultimate.
Either way.
Let's move on.
Thank you, thank you very much for the committee. Thank you. All right, next item, marijuana ordinance proposed, marijuana ordinance.
Hey, thanks both of you for coming, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too.
This came up because it was suggested to me that something we need to consider rather than wait for, wait for the situation to be upon us, that maybe we go look into regulating or moratorium on, on development of the various facilities, this, this sales areas, the cultivation areas, things that are listed in the, in the law that they're recounting on now. And there's a suggestion here from, I guess the town manager put this together, what we could do, which amounts to a moratorium to give the. we could do, which amounts to a moratorium, to give the, give us and planning board time to look at the situation, try to decide what, if anything, we wanna do. I agree with the, the idea that you don't wanna wait for, you don't wanna wait for the problem, the problem to come into town before we address it, and that's, that's really why I wanted to see it, right before us, so we can just talk about that, try to decide what we wanna do. Not necessarily that we're gonna write anything tonight, but do you wanna refer to the planning board, do you wanna go ahead and think about a moratorium, do you, what are you gonna do? Do you wanna put it before the town?
I, I think we should put it before the planning board, too. A lot of communities have already done it.
Yeah.
And I just think we should have something, if, if the people are really concerned about, it's gonna be legal to have it in possession and smoking and whatever, but if we wanna prohibit the growth of it here and the sale of it in town, then I guess that's something they would have to address, and then it's up to the voters to either approve it or not.
What are you gonna do about alcohol and pot liquors and stuff, because if you guys ever been out and dealt with people medical, I'm going medical now, I have never seen an ugly pot smoker in my life. You go deal with a drunk, and tell me.
Well, it isn't a question about having it, Rick, everybody's gonna be able to have it, and...
And it's gonna grow it here anyways, whether you pass it or not, who's, who's gonna enforce it? There's a lot of, I, I think we're jumping the gun on this.
Well, all, all that we're asking for, I'm asking for now, is just start thinking about it, and start, you know, perhaps give it to the planning board, let them be mulling it over. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be something that's gonna go into effect next week. It's gonna take some time before anything happens, if anything happens. And that's really all I'm asking for, let's, let's address the situation, and see what we wanna do.
I guess I'd like to see this before, before it got to a board meeting. I guess, again, you know, if stuff gets in here that we have no idea it's coming, and then all of a sudden, open the book, and there's a marijuana ordinance, you're like, what the hell is this? Put it plain. Where did this come from?
I just told you about it.
I know, I know now, I didn't know.
Yeah. I've had, I've had taxpayers talk to me about it, and that's the reason I...
You're gonna get some tax out of this, too.
I suspect the state is gonna regulate how it's sold.
Absolutely.
I would expect that that would happen.
Question, can a moratorium be open-ended until state and federal law is clarified on this?
I think that...
Is there, is there a statutory limit as to how long a moratorium can run?
I think it's regulated by statute, and it has to be for a purpose.
And six months?
Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days, okay.
You got, you got Becky here.
I was gonna say, I think a lot of municipalities are concerned, but maybe it doesn't have to, the concerns don't have to be executed quite so quickly, when the recount's underway, then the effective date provision of the constitution delays when the law, if the law didn't back pass, delays when it becomes effective, and then the state agency that's supposed to develop application procedures and so forth, has up to nine months to develop all that, and I'm guessing it's gonna take them longer than nine months. And in the meantime, a town that really felt strongly about having a moratorium or adopt a ordinance, I think would have plenty of time to do that. And I just wanted to add that MMA has been asked by a number of towns if they would develop some model language for a moratorium ordinance or for, you're also authorized by the town to, by the statute to totally prohibit the retail, sales, and the, the social clubs, and so there's a sample prohibition that one of the attorneys in the office drafted. So, if the planning board is assigned to look into this, we've got some resources that they could tap.
Plus, it's still against federal law.
Well, yeah, but waiting to see if the federal law government does anything.
Anyway...
Well, all I was gonna say, it is against federal law, and not enforcing the federal law is akin to not enforcing immigration law, so...
But there is one point that people overlook, and that's the, the juvenile code, how the juvenile code attaches itself to the adult code. So, if there's nothing in the adult code that says that prohibits someone from under twenty-one years old to smoke pot, I could be fifteen years old and repeatedly smoke pot in my high school bathroom, and there's no procedure to get me in front of a court to help correct me, or give me services. So, that's a real issue that Belgrade, everyone's gonna face. That's a real issue.
Just one other point, or two other points. One, the recounting right now, we don't know if it passed.
Yeah.
Number two, the legislature can make changes to the law, dependent on issues that it thinks that the law hasn't, or the referendum hasn't addressed, so those are things that we don't know how it's gonna work on.
Becky?
Could you ask a question about whether you could have a moratorium that was sort of open-ended? I think the, the moratorium statute envisions that there's a specific goal of developing ordinances, and you've got a hundred and eighty days to try to do that, and if you need an extension, then the law says the select board could vote, hold the chance to extend it, but I think a court would wanna see a good faith effort toward completing the process. So, I don't think an open-ended moratorium ordinance would be something that a, a court would uphold.
Could the, could the planning board in Belgrade today legally accept and act upon an application for a marijuana outlet, outlet in Belgrade?
It isn't legal right now in Maine, because this new law doesn't take it quite some time, it, it, even once it takes effect, the agency, practically speaking, that kind of business needs a state license, and then, once the state application's filed, the state would kick it to the towns as well, to see if the town has any regulation that this proposed business would have to comply with. So, if the town doesn't adopt anything, then it would just be the state license that would be the...
Kind of like selling alcohol, same thing, and cigarettes, same thing.
Except that there's very little authority for towns to regulate alcohol, other than through the local option questions, but...
You're saying the town couldn't approve an application that was made, subject to state law?
Oh, no, I don't think, I don't think that, yeah, the town wouldn't be able to adopt an ordinance now, trying to regulate that activity and approve, approve the application subject to state. I think the law envisions the reverse, that the state application would go in first, and then if a town has an ordinance, the state would refer the application to the town for its...
I was thinking of, in the absence of an ordinance, could the planning board act subject to state law?
Well, the, the, the planning board wouldn't have any authority under this new law to take any action, it'd have to be a local ordinance that would authorize the, the planning board to do something, yeah.
I think Becky's right, I think it's gonna be a while before this thing has ever settled out, and we got a long time to think about it. Maybe we just oughta think about it.
I've never tried it, and don't plan on trying it, but I just think, you know what, here we go again, something we can't even import.
Yeah. This is awesome.
Yeah, yeah. All right, all right, you've just smoked a cigarette.
But you didn't inhale.
Yeah, I didn't inhale, that's it. You're pretty dead.
All right, I guess what we'll do is, we'll just put this on the table, bring it up down the road.
Well, when it, when it becomes more serious, when the, if it passes and the whole bit, then we probably need to do something.
At least I got to talk about it.
Little farmers, I hope they get this thing passed.
No, they're not, they're gonna be rich people.
All right, next item, old town office right-of-way.
I've finally heard back from the Department of Transportation, and they are willing to sell us twenty feet of the right-of-way of the old town office for twenty-five hundred dollars. What is the pleasure?
The right-of-way on, on one thirty-five.
Will they, will they hold that for the new owners?
I can ask.
Rather than us pay twenty-five hundred, that somebody can buy it?
Or that would be included in the price of the building, or something like that?
Could be, yeah, well, yeah.
Let's make it...
I think because we're...
If we get over it.
We probably should take them up a lot.
You think?
I think probably you're right.
Is that the right-of-way along one thirty-five?
Yeah.
What about the right-of-way along twenty-seven?
That's another twenty-five hundred.
Because that, that cuts right into the bargain space.
Yeah, no, they said they couldn't do that.
So, we can only get one right-of-way, huh?
Yeah.
So, what do you wanna do? Make a motion, Ernie?
First of all, where we gonna get the money? I guess that's my biggest question right now. Do we, you don't...
Marijuana sales, which...
Yeah.
I'm not sure where that falls, where that God rail is, if it takes us out through the God rail, somehow, where that falls.
Could you add it to, or put it, if the building were to be sold, or, you know, if there was a compor, and you could say, you know, the town would kick this in as a sweep and make the sale, and maybe that's, that's, you know, rather than buying it now.
Sweeten the pie.
So, do you have any indication of how long the offer is open?
No.
Yes?
I'm just sitting here thinking, do you folks have the authority to even expend that money? Or do you have to get it from the town, to, at a point that they need it?
I think we have here on the town.
Yeah, I'll buy it.
We have here on the town.
My, the conversation's...
The right-of-way?
Well, you wanna, you wanna go forward, you wanna just put it on the table, what do you wanna do?
Let's see if we can get some more information on it, see how long that stood for, or...
And if it, if it also would carry over to new owners.
Yeah, if somebody else, if somebody did buy it, could they, could be, entertain that, it's about as, selling price is...
All right, that'll come back up again in the future. Land donation.
This summer, I was approached by Larry Mace, and he wanted to see about donating his small acre lot to the town.
Who is it?
Larry Mace.
Down by Gagney's, yeah?
Yeah. Small acre lot, it's currently valued at thirteen hundred dollars, and the taxes this year were eighteen dollars and twenty cents.
Is it that bog?
No, actually, no.
I think it is.
I think it may enjoy, if it doesn't enjoy, it's very close to a piece of land that now, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're... Yes.
Well, according to this, is this map in my brain?
We can drive over it.
It's right over twenty-seven.
Right on twenty-seven.
Yeah, it's right on twenty-seven, and I think a, a...
What a place to put my business in.
That's the wrong one.
Yeah, it's sixty-six. Sorry, I might've gone when I was looking at something else. That's right in the middle, that one.
You could buy that and sell it to some...
It's an Ontario lot.
Yeah, it is, you're right.
I'll buy it.
Rent it, yeah.
I've been drinking a hundred.
No, we don't need another piece of land.
Why would we take that? That's it.
The swamp.
We'll have to get it out of taxes, yes.
Actually, Mike, if it actually enjoys, that, joins the lot that we have down there, that'd be a good preservation in terms of wetland for migrating birds and stuff, so, I, I'm not quite sure where that, I know we own a fairly large area of land. Sixty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which piece of land? I'm not sure which piece we own, but six, six.
One in the back, what's that one in the front there?
Which, which one does the town own?
The town owns a lot of the other thing.
Right at the end of the lake, I think.
No, it's...
Oh, this is past. Sixty-six?
Yeah, so...
Yeah, you're right.
Sixty-six.
That little one. Yeah, the one that's landlocked.
What, what number?
Is it the yellow one?
Sixty-six.
No, I, I went wrong way down.
It's on the other side of the road. You walk to the right of twenty-seven, you go sixty-five, and then the next one in is sixty-six. And you have sixty-six A, and then you go to sixty-seven.
Obviously, your glasses are better than mine.
Oh, it's high.
I'm gonna need a buy a lot like that.
Sports, you know?
Really?
Way down.
Well, I'm sure...
I didn't know, did you?
Then where's the NBA all around it?
People buy a whole ton.
I don't think we do.
He thought it was way down here, I think. I, I don't think we're interested, I, I'm not. I don't think it's good work.
Well, I guess, I, I think one of the ways to look at the donation, just, just for discussion purposes, if it's a donation, if he lets it go, we're gonna have to deal with sending him a registered letters, and then the town is gonna end up owning it, and then what are we gonna do? Who are we gonna sell it to? If we get it donated to us, we could sell it to somebody, if we can sell it, and we won't have anything in it, at all.
But we're still gonna have probably legal stuff in it, to get the titles changed, open all that stuff, won't we?
Well, we'll have to record it. He, he writes us a deed, and we accept it, get it recorded as a recording fee, and it's a donation, so one dollar, another valuable consideration, there'll be no transfer tax, and we don't pay, I don't, we must be exempting tax.
So, maybe they wouldn't...
I'm just thinking, you know, if, if it's me, and I wanna get rid of it, because it's no value to me, and, okay, I'll donate to the town, okay, you don't want it, okay, just keep sending me my tax bills, and you could have it eventually, take it from me, because I'm not, I'm not paying my taxes no more, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, it's gonna, I don't think the taxes are probably having anything on it.
Eighteen dollars and some odd...
Eighteen dollars, it's gonna cost us more to send out registered letters and process.
I hadn't thought of that.
I, I, I think you ought to be sure how that lot sits in relation to a piece of the town more really owns in that area.
Yeah.
They may enjoy, and that may have something to do with the decision.
Guess we need to do a little research on that, see which one they own.
I was aware that we owned a lot down there.
Won't be long, we'll own a lot of Belgrade.
Yeah, I think you're right.
All right, so we're not gonna do anything tonight on this?
I think we need to table it, till we get some more information on it.
Yeah, we need to, I guess, if the town manager would locate where our lot is, the town lot is, and what number that is, and then mark it, mark this one in yellow again.
I'll mark that icon.
I circled mine with a pen, so it's okay, we've got the book. Save a tree.
We need, need a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Name the second clause, if you'll. Five, zero, table it.
Hey, the warrant. How come in my book I got bricks on twenty-seven? That's not happening?
Nope.
Okay.
Waiting for a report from him, and then he can do it.
Okay, thank you.
And sign on you. And we'll get to the warrant.
Yeah, there's actually two warrants, um, showing, um, pile of bills in today, and trying to pay everything we can as quickly as we can, so it'll be easier when we close up the books at the end of the month, so, um, I have a second warrant for you, Carney, you can't vote on this one, but I...
So, the one that's in the book is accurate? Is it, oh, it's not this one?
Yeah, that's the second, that's the first one.
I can't read it.
Because he...
No, 'cause I'm on it.
He's on it, yeah.
Well, this is the first one?
That's the first one, that's the one that was in your book, the big one.
All right. You can run, one sixty-one, two million, nine hundred fifty-one dollars, nine hundred thirty-nine, sorry, two million, nine hundred fifty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and eight cents.
I'll check in, Ted. I do have some questions.
It's not what I got.
That's not what I did either.
Two million, nine fifty-one, five twenty-five.
Yeah, she added a couple things before.
Give me that number again, please. Two million, nine fifty-one... Thank you.
You ready for my question?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
On Mr. Man's is, Phil, on the point, if you go way down the bottom of it, it said invoice total is three hundred and eighty-one, three forty-five, and you go down, it says vendor's total is three ninety-one, eight seventeen, why is it two different numbers there?
Because he did other work. Do you have the whole thing?
Yeah. Oh, I, oh, I see, okay. I, I didn't, I see it, I'm fine. 'Cause it added, I see it.
Yeah, he did work on twenty-seven, and...
I saw it, yeah.
There was some skin damage.
Well, I, I just, it was the bottom two numbers, and they just didn't jive, and they were close, and I'm going, why did that come up? 'Cause right underneath it, what's this, add new zip lines?
That's the zip line, that's the phone line, so they're finally getting around to switching them over for this office.
Goes to the top of the cemetery, you write a zip line right down.
Great. Slide down if I have a couple.
You felt well.
And I think that's all I had on that one.
All right, the question I had before, electricity to the dam, I'm trying to see if I can find it. Okay. Where's the middle dam? Main Street, Main Street, I assume it's, I'm dying.
Always late.
Yeah.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be the power over there, yeah.
Yeah, it's not very much, so you think it's just the...
I remember, I remember there is over there, 'cause we, guy droned, and we had to shut the dam over there.
There must be, yeah, there must be electrical.
Yeah. I'm thinking about it.
How much is the bill?
Seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents.
Wicked.
No wonder they even have media there for that, you know, cautious.
The other one I had, the, the question was on the, uh, the teen center, they call it the teen center, the center. I assume that, that's a building down at, down at Lakeside, they call it the Bloom Lodge or something. They don't shut the power off in the winter, too. There's nothing in there.
What's the bill on it?
Fifteen dollars.
Yeah, well, I think the turning on and off is probably, I don't know what to say.
You didn't shut the brake box.
Oh, we...
No, see, you can do that, that's why I do it in my camp. And then you get, then you get a minimal bill, a couple bucks.
So how, how are they...
The minimum bill is fifteen dollars.
Yeah, that's probably what that is.
Never mind. Never mind. Any other questions?
Demand charge.
Comments? Okay, any motion?
Vote to accept the one.
Gary did that. Just read the book.
One motion in favor? Five zero. What's the other one?
The other one is warrant number one sixty-four, and that is for twelve thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents, and I'm gonna have to abstain because I'm one in the warrant.
I'll second that.
Made in second, made in second. We just take a minute to, uh, facility maintenance, snowball. Oh, this is your snowball. Well, I think we're gonna talk about that.
They buy that snowball, or they're all useless. You guys let it do it. I had nothing to do with it. All I did was gas the line out real cheap.
I thought it was a hundred and forty dollars, not fourteen hundred. All right, I'll lose, uh, any questions on this one? Nope. All those in favor?
Oops, how am I staying?
Four, four in favor, one abstaining. All right. I'll make your update.
So I need to pump you guys into a couple things regarding the town report. I need a dedication, and I need a cover design. Any ideas, suggestions, thoughts?
I would suggest on the dedication, I'd like to suggest Valencia for the dedication.
Good idea.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Comments or anything?
I'll second that.
What do you do, something designed with, maybe the center, with the church on the center or something like that?
We usually do an in-memory, too, that way.
Yeah. And we have a marbles also. And the ones, the one I like is Connie, or one more else, Connie. Anybody else? Who else is?
Lou Allen, Ashwin.
Oh, yeah, Lou Allen, Lou Allen, yeah, for sure.
Bob Early last year or this year?
Last year.
Last year.
Probably the cover could be, you picture this building, actual building, that was just a sketch on it before painted in.
Well, I was saying, if we're gonna dedicate it to Valencia, wanna have a picture of the center, that's where she, uh...
With the rotten boards and everything?
Well, we could Photoshop it.
Yeah, it's funny, me, I'm just...
You could have that picture in the dedication portion. We've done that in the past.
Yeah.
And then have the cover. You know, like, I'm gonna...
Put it, and use this building as a photograph of this building.
I like that idea. I like this building on the cover.
This building.
Yep. Brand new. Lot of work went into it.
Good picture.
Lot of town meetings that got...
Just do not put the cost in.
It's...
Past history.
That might have still stuck to my face.
Okay.
Go ahead.
They'd kill us.
Anything else for the, in the morning, tributing?
Yeah. Who else passed away? Or somebody else, I can't think of who. I mean, I know there were a number of people.
Ed Don Vicfod passed away, and, um, it's quite a few of them.
Wasn't there somebody in your family that passed away?
Oh, yeah.
Last year.
It was last year.
Yeah.
Can you, could you give us a list of the deaths?
Sure.
Should be able to.
Was there a limit to the number you can put in there?
No.
How many pages do I want to page for printing?
Well, I mean, you're not gonna have that many, I don't think.
No.
I think we usually pick.
Well, the section, those are listed, haven't they?
Yeah.
All we gotta do is look at last year's and see how many we have.
Yeah.
That was kind of the guideline I think we'd use.
You got it right in the book, right in front.
I think we added three or four last year.
Somebody else needs to have it, somebody else.
Look at that. You ask and you receive, just like that.
You don't have a book in front of you?
Yes, I do, but you want to quit, ask the question, look it up.
Well, it's our head word.
Well, I'll get the list and I'll email it.
You like that?
All right, so we've got, we need to vote on that, and this is just consensus.
Consensus.
Okay.
I'll vote yes.
Well, we can finalize it.
Yeah, it both don't count.
Yeah.
All right. What else do you need?
So I have, um, three other quick things, just an update on the foreclosures for the two thousand fourteen taxes. I was able, we had four that entered the automatic foreclosure process. I was able to wrangle payments for one of them, thank God, because the payment for all three years was over twenty-five thousand dollars. So we really didn't wanna own that facility, that building, that would've been bad. But we do still have three that, um, have just been unsuccessful and kind of in contact. We've called it twice and left voicemails, and, um, one of the property owners, we just came on. I've pulled up, uh, everything, so sort of, I don't know. Unfortunately, it looks like we're gonna have to foreclose on at least, at least one day. So the date is, uh, the date, the end of the thirty-day redemption period is December twenty-second, so just kind of keep that in mind that we'll have to deal with that at the first meeting. Um, the other thing I have is, last week I spoke with a gentleman by the name of Adam Sturven from, um, Northern Benefits. He emailed me a few weeks ago about providing a quote for us for our health insurance. He was in last week, and gave me these estimates. Um, and this column here is our current plan. This is the plan he's proposing. It's still an Anthem plan, and it is a savings to the town, and this is timely, particularly considering, uh, we're talking about budgets and funding a hundred percent of important health insurance, like our employee handbook says. So the plan we implore, the PPO two thousand plan, uh, gives people an out-of-pocket maximum of four thousand dollars, which is five hundred dollars more than the current plan. Uh, the copay is, um, for office visits and stuff, is ten dollars more, but you could certainly offset that with the, um, the HRA that we have, um, if you even decide to keep that. But the premium for this plan is five hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents versus six ninety-two eighty-one. I asked about the rate increases, what the average has been per year, and he said it's been about seven percent versus the eleven and a quarter percent that hit with MMA or something, so, um, he said he was, he was happy to come in and answer any questions and talk more about the plan and, uh, the different options for the town at the next meeting on the twentieth.
Don't we have to bid this? Bid the, bid the insurance program?
I would think we'd wanna send it out. You know what? We tried this a few years ago, and we heard every reason in the world why it shouldn't be changing. You know what? If we can save the town money and the employees' money, we need to look at it, whether it's Anthem or whatever. That's my feeling, too, and that was my feeling before.
Well, why not invite people to come in and, you know, tell us what they can do for us?
Well, I think you need to, I mean, send it out, see what you get. There's a lot of insurance companies that would love to come in.
Just, there was, just, I'd like to reply to that.
Go ahead.
There was two, two years ago, Memorial, and there was four last year, so, uh, what we've done in the past is, we've asked them to come in and talk with the town manager. The insurance companies in the past, they come in, talk, go over all the things, what the cost and everything, and then you bring it to the board, and then we kinda decide...
As long as we get more than one person.
I mean, I, well, no.
Well, you got two here. You know what your last two is? You got MMA and the other guy. I, I would, yeah, I would say that's fine, to see if you get a couple more to come in and talk to you, or...
So how many, does the state still have quite a few providers?
The, well, he did price out also, but of course it's the same agent, but he did also price out, um, Aetna and Hybrid Pilgrim, who are the three companies that they deal with, and the Hybrid Pilgrim rate was a little bit less, but it's a harder company to deal with because they're out of New Jersey.
The guy that wanted to come in was Dick Scott from Kai's Insurance, and he tried and tried and tried, and he got blown off. He was pretty upset.
Well, we should entertain that, but maybe you ought to get a list from Call Down Godner at, to the Insurance Bureau down there, and she, they can give you a list of who provides health insurance in our area.
Area, yeah. Definitely. I think you need to shop around.
What was the guy's name?
Dick Scott from Kai's Insurance. Yeah, and in fact, oh, I won't say.
Maybe it's worth shopping a little bit.
So maybe Denny knows the answer to this off the top of his head. How time-sensitive is this with the January first and the open enrollment and all that stuff? Do you remember?
You mean as far as insurance?
As far as changing insurance for health insurance.
Well, it, it, I think Danny doesn't, it, when you, there is a period, if you already, if we already have that.
We've got a thirty-day hold, aren't we?
Yeah, but once, if you're newly signing up, then you have, it's a different time frame, 'cause you've just taken them on. So we can take them on in July, Chels.
Who is this, this guy?
His name is Adam Sturven, the vice president of Northern Benefits.
Where's that, where's that out of?
Their main office is in, already works out of Moore, but they're in main management department.
I would expect these guys are just selling somebody's insurance. I mean, it's, you only have so many companies that are gonna...
Well, this is Anthem.
Cover you.
It's Anthem.
Well, Anthem, now, there's probably others that would do that. I'd kinda like to know what those...
Yeah, absolutely.
But...
Well, Carrie will shop it a little bit.
Okay.
I was trying to think of guys.
And then the last thing is, when you watch our recon meeting, uh, to talk about budget stuff, all the stuff that we tabled on Sunday. Do you typically do that at your next selectmen's meeting? So you wait till the twentieth, or how do you, how have you always ended this?
Just as soon as they have that data ready. I think we've always entertained it at the next meeting or an earlier one.
We've had special, all the special meeting in time. It depends on how, you know, how time-sensitive it is.